This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Good evening, and welcome to the East Hampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, November 5th. Meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast by E Media on Charter Channel 193 and live streaming on their webpage, easthammedmedia.org. Councillors and participants in this meeting are gathering hybrid on the order extended until June 30, 2027, allowing us to do so. I remind both the members of the city council and the public participating remotely to remain muted until recognized by the city council president. Also, for the members of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of the meeting unless you are participating in the public speak time or in the public hearing. Thank you. This meeting is now called to order. Mary Ann?
Peg Coniff.
Here.
Connie Denham.
Here.
Salem Derby.
President.
Felicia Jadzick.
Here.
JP Kuzinski.
Here.
Tom Peak.
Here.
Brad Riley.
Here.
Tamara Smith.
Here.
JT Terrell.
Here.
At this time, I'd like to take a moment of silence to reflect on anything that's on our mind and to help us become more focused for this evening. I would ask you to rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I promise to do my best to achieve. Thank you. Are there any minutes?
No, should be next time.
There was just a little election that happened in between and it gets a little, a little rough. I would like to take this opportunity when we have Mary Ann here to thank her for all the hard work and her staff, she and her staff did for this election. It went off better than I think could ever be expected. This is her first time doing it on her own as city clerk, so round of applause. Would you please pass the word along to everyone?
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to thank all the election workers, of course. Yeah, man.
Absolutely. I'm just gonna take a moment of privilege here to congratulate all those who came together to work on campaigns, to work and get out to vote, and for those who stood up and took the challenge. It is remarkable. It is democracy. It is our best system at its best. Thank you all for participating, putting it out there, and going home with nothing left. That's the way to do it. Get on the field, play the game. I thank you all. Public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who'd care to make any statement? You will have up to three minutes, up to, not including. Please state your name, your address, for the record.
Yeah, my name is Nathan Markey, 37 Holyoke Street. I want to thank the voters of East Hampton for making me city council elect. I also want to congratulate Salem Derby on a well fought race and JT Terrell. It is a spirited race. It did not get ugly, though there was definitely pointed commentary. I also want to thank Lindsay Sekula, who is a dear friend of mine, on her race that she waged as well, and I certainly hope she sticks around as executive assistant. I also want to say bye Peg and thank you for being my micromanager on the very last day of a campaign. So get back in line. But anyhow, yes, I'm, thank you, voters of East Hampton, congratulations to everybody, and that is it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Going once, going twice, no takers here. How about in the audience, if you could raise your hand virtually and let me know you're interested in saying a few words, and you have up to three minutes. Going once. Going twice. I don't see any takers. It's now closed for public speak. We have hearings, so if anyone's here to address the public hearings, please stick around. 6:15, three more minutes. Let's see what we can do. First up, items for immediate, immediate action. I have none, communications from elected officials, boards, and commissions. I would like to defer to somebody who might like to say a few words. But first, I'd like to say just how grateful I am to that person.
Thank you. I'll try to keep this under three minutes.
That's why I retired it that way.
I, I do hope you'll indulge me for a few moments. This tonight will be my last city council meeting. But before I go, I wanted to just say a couple of things. This is the second time I'm retiring from the East Hampton City Council, and trust me, this is the last retirement there will be. I retired at the conclusion of the 2021 term and was oh so certain that was my last city council stint. However, fate had other ideas. My prior six years on the council and these past nine months have reminded me that this job is not for the faint of heart. It has been challenging, fun, time-consuming, change-making, and important, and it is a privilege I never took for granted. Will I miss it? Probably. But I am more certain than ever that it's time for fresh voices to join the conversation about moving East Hampton forward, and I am thrilled at the new councillors we elected just yesterday. I originally joined the city council in 2016 with zero prior political aspirations, but a desire to contribute my time to the city I had grown to love. I asked a simple question to a friend. Do you know how I can volunteer for a committee or something? "I have a great idea. You should run for city council," was her excited response. Not exactly the answer I was looking for, but here we are. As this chapter of my life ends, I wanted to send out a sincere and heartfelt thank you to East Hampton. First and foremost, to all the people of East Hampton, you show up when your community needs you most. From community events like Cultural Chaos, Porch Fest, Give 'Em The Bird, and dehubilation, to name just a few. And yesterday, the amount of food people brought in when they came in to vote was phenomenal. So that, just quietly lending a hand to your neighbors when no one is watching, to fighting fiercely for the causes that mean the most to you, I am humbled daily by your compassion, your engagement, and your commitment to the little city with a big heart. I want to especially thank everyone who works in City Hall. I have worked alongside most of you during my time on the council and have come to appreciate your knowledge, your professionalism, and your willingness to educate me on the finer details of anything from city planning to speed limits and traffic patterns, among a thousand other questions I have asked. No matter how silly my questions may have sounded, you answered them thoroughly and patiently. Your time commitment to the city is at times heroic. Attending meetings after your workday ends, committee meetings, city council meetings, and probably others I know nothing about. Thank you so much for all that you do. To our Public Safety Department, Father Pete Norris, Police Chief Alexander, and former Police Chief Alberti, I appreciated the frank and open conversations we have had through the years, and although we may have disagreed, I always felt there was mutual respect in the room, and I hope you felt the same. Thank you for your dedication to keeping us all safe. To the past and present city councillors that I have had the privilege to serve alongside, I thank you for your collaboration, your insights, and often the ability to bring new and unique perspectives to the table for discussion and reflection. Continue to listen, to question, and to innovate. The city needs your insight and your energy now more than ever. Keep up the great work. Thank you to my wife Deb, who has for years listened to me go on and on about almost every city council meeting, and even when I started to bore myself, she continued to listen. Before I go, I do want to congratulate Mayor Derby, the new city council members, the new school committee members. You have hard work ahead of you, so good luck. If you do a good job, East Hampton will thrive. In any election, there will be those who win and those who don't. And we celebrate our candidate, our chosen candidate who wins. But no matter if the candidate who won was our first choice or not, it is our responsibility to hold every elected person accountable. Democracy is indeed messy, but it is also alive and well in East Hampton, and for that, we should be grateful. So thank you, East Hampton, for the opportunity to serve you. It's been truly one of the great hours of my life. Thanks, JP.
Thank you, councillor. Sorry to hear this will be your last.
Deb, I don't believe it personally.
Smart, smart country.
Motion to open the public hearing, second.
Um, we have a motion to open the public hearings. I suppose it's time. Thank you again. Public hearing, motion to open the public hearings, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public hearings are now open. Supplemental appropriations, CPA.
Yes, I thank you, Mr. President. We have three CPA appropriations here. Eva will be able to answer anything, but I'll do my best to just queue them up. And so the first one that we have is a $200,000 appropriation from the Fund Balance Reserve for Affordable Housing. This is going to go to the Ferry Street Affordable Housing Project. You might recall voting on this before because when the CPA initially made the larger ask, they decided to split it up across several fiscal years. So this is the third and final year where we're going to be voting on this. The other two payments have already been made. And this would be used to help the construction of 90-plus affordable housing units in the Ferry Street development. This was voted on unanimously by both the CPA and the City Council Finance Committee, as were all the other ones that we're going to be talking about tonight. Is there anything else you want to say?
Um, I'll just note, so this is 200,000 of a total of $500,000 that has been awarded for this project or was suggested for appropriation by the CPA committee, the final appropriation, as councillor Peak said. And this $200,000, along with last fiscal year's $200,000, $200,000 from FY25, will be awarded after the placing of the permanent affordable housing deed restriction on the property.
Anything else? Any questions from any of the councillors regarding this matter? Seeing none, I will open this up to the public in the audience. Anyone here to speak on the subject? Seeing none, I'm the online group. Anyone care to speak on the subject? Please, raise your hand now. Seeing none. This is gonna be a quiet beginning to the evening. Any further discussion on the subject? I will entertain a motion.
Uh, so yeah, I would make this following request in the form of a motion. Request hereby made for approval of the following appropriation amount requested, $200,000 to be appropriated from Fund Balance Reserve for Affordable Housing, $200,000 to be appropriated to Ferry Street Affordable Housing, $200,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose. The funding is requested for the construction of 90-plus affordable housing units as recommended by the CPA committee in the FY24 project funding agreement.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Councillor Riley?
Yes, I do actually have one question that just came to me. Councillor Peak, can you tell me, once we approve this, what is the remaining balance in this account?
Certainly, yeah. So the remaining balance in the affordable housing account after this appropriation is $59,078. And the total, the total remaining amount in the, in the CPA accounts is $619,189.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Great, next.
Okay, so the next one that we have is a $78,020 appropriation for rebuilding the Nashwannik Pond retaining wall at fishing access point. So I think people probably know, there, there's some pictures if people need to, but there's a, there's a point in, on Nashwannik Pond, in Nantucket Park where a lot of people go to fish. There's a retaining wall that's set up there. That retaining wall is doing less of a good job retaining every single year. It's degrading. It's gonna get, need to get replaced anyway, and they, so they've, they've had this setup in a way that's gonna be a lot more stable. It's gonna be using stone instead of wood, so it should be a, I think this one is the, the wood one has been good for a little while, but this one should last us for at least, you know, a generation. And it's gonna be sort of terraced with a, a spot that'll be like a nice spot for people who are fishing to, to stop by, so. You know, and obviously, it's something we need to do because you don't want all of that point falling into the pond, which is gonna happen if we don't repair it. And so I think it's a nice project. Once again, everyone approved it.
Councillor Smith?
How are these materials gonna get to that point? Would they come by a boat just across the pond, or would they go through all of those woods and trails down?
Well, I think that the spot that we're talking about isn't super far from one of the, the roads in Nantucket Park. So I think they should be able to drive them up to, to that point, and then, I'm not sure if the plan would be to physically carry them or to get a little tractor or something, but in some way to, you can, we should be able to get them about 100 feet away really, really easily. And I'm not sure about the remaining step. That might be a question. I don't know if John Mason is on the call, but he might know better than me, but we should be able to get pretty close.
I'm just, I wonder. I, I thought that this was the retaining wall in the very back of the pond. Like I, we get there by a boat versus the one on the side. So it looks like Beth Tiffany might have an answer.
She can answer, yeah. Or I can also, if I can share my screen. Screen sharing capabilities, I can show where this is.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
I can talk to this as well if you'd like.
I will. Thank you.
Let's get those three dots.
This one?
Yep. Then go, Addus Coast.
Should be able to share.
Excellent. Okay. Um, so this, this retaining wall is located right here at this point. Can councillor see it?
Yep.
Okay. And so the park road is this, is this circle right here?
Right at the point.
And so the access, I think they actually had it on one of the slides. Yeah, so here's the road right up here. There's some large stones right on the edge, and then the, the intention is for the construction equipment to drive down this way into this open wooded area.
Okay. I, I thought it was the other location, and I just couldn't even see how it would get through there, so thank you.
Anyone in the audience? Care to speak to the subject? Anyone? Beth Tiffany, would you please?
Yes.
Go ahead. And I'm mute. Thank you. And you're up, and you may even have some answers for us.
Just to expand on what Ava said, if you're at the boat launch, it's across, you look across to this.
Okay.
Mara, it's not at the end where the siltation basin is. I think that's what you're talking, you're thinking about.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, that's the siltation basin. There's no retaining walls down there.
Okay.
Yeah. Is there any other questions I could answer? I think Ava explained though pretty much.
I'll, I'll note that the, the Conservation Commission permitted this, this retaining wall back in June of this year, and just that we, the city has a lot of gratitude to the Nashwannik Pond Steering Committee for this really thoughtful application. They've offered $20,000 of their own donations to, to supplement this $78,020 appropriation towards this project, and as well as a lot of, a lot of in-kind donations, namely the, namely the permitting process, which is easily a $10,000 process that they have the skills and expertise to do in-house. So really an extremely professional crew to work with there.
Thank you for Paul Davis.
Thank you. Anyone else in the online group that would care to comment or ask questions? Seeing none, I had one question, if I may, and that was in your overall discussions, this is an important infrastructure project for the city, the pond itself. And there are various pieces and components that go together and need work and repairs and monies from time to time. Was there anything on the horizon that's coming that we're not aware of yet? And we should be just, just kind of keep in the back of our minds as we think about the future.
I think I'll defer that question to the Nashwannik Pond Steering Committee, if they have anything they want to know on that.
I can talk to that.
Comment again. I recognize you.
Okay. We, um, evaluate, we had GZA evaluate all six retaining walls last, 2023, May of 2023. And they wanted an extraordinary amount, 19,000 something, just for what they thought should be done. And we didn't agree with all of their evaluations, and they wouldn't even show them to us until we paid the 19,600. So we decided that this one wall was visibly a problem. If this busts out, the sediment's in the pond. That's what they were put in there for. So we have already paid $9,600 for the design, and then we use that to continue with the CONCOM. We don't have any future plans right now. We're trying to get through this. And then we'll, then we'll look at the other ones to see if there are some that we really feel need attention. Yeah, we may be working on a pond management plan, but that would be no, that's something that Ava mentioned to us that she'd like to see in the future. So that's kind of on our thoughts, but that is not anything we would go looking for money for.
Thank you for putting this request in perspective. I appreciate that very much. Any other comments or thoughts from the councillors? I would entertain a motion.
And I'll make the following request in the form of a motion. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested, $78,020 to be appropriated from Fund Balance Reserve for Open Space, $78,020 to be appropriated to Nashwannik Pond Retaining Wall, $78,020. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose. The funding would be used to rebuild the retaining wall and fishing access point, ensuring the stability of a heavily used portion of the pond shore.
Second.
Motion in a second. I have a question from councillor.
No questions, just a comment?
Comment. No questions?
Uh, no, I, I appreciate the work that's being done in regards to this. This particular location has a special spot in my heart, as my partner and I were married there. And in fact, we even had some fishermen there who were fishing while we were setting our vows. Yeah, so it was quite lovely. But I think this is just a, an indication of, you know, using our funds to meet the various needs of our constituents, right? And this happens to be one small population of fishermen, right, or fisherwomen or fisherpeople, to be able to kind of access the, the park and to, to use the park in the ways that they would, that they enjoy. So I appreciate the work that you've done on this.
Thank you.
Anything we can do to help those who fish?
Yeah. Now we can eat the fish, but.
Now we throw them back and hope for a better time, right? As we, as we proceed to make this pond stronger and move forward. Um, councillor Peak?
Uh, I made the motion.
Second, you made the second.
I made a comment.
All comments were dealt with. No one else? Let's have a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Can I just say, thank you so very much. We have been two years, and it's gonna be, hopefully, done in the spring. It's been a long journey doing this, and without Ava, wow. Incredible, helping us, CONCOM, CPA, Finance Committee, thank you very much. We really appreciate it, and we love the pond.
Welcome. Thank you for all your help.
Alrighty. Have a good evening.
Okay, one more CPA. This is a $75,000 appropriation to fund an assessment and restoration design of the town clock. So for those who were not here the last time we had this conversation, the clock that sits at the Congregational Church on Main Street is owned by the city. How exactly that came to be, I'm not exactly clear about, but it is in fact owned by the city of East Hampton. It is not in great shape. The Congregational Church would like it to be in great shape. It is a historic church, so it does apply. They do apply for these funds, but even without that, it is our property, and so it's not really their job to fix it. It's ours. A portion of it fell and could have badly hurt somebody if they had been present at that time. So that's why it's got the sort of mesh over it right now, but the thought is that they would very much like to get it fixed up. But to do that, we have to sort of get a design and assessment of, of the, the overall, just the, the big picture and, and what needs to happen there. We did put out an appropriation a few years ago to do something like this, and correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that basically the amount was not sufficient for the kind of, for, for what this sort of work actually requires, so we're, we're taking another shot at it now. And yes, I, Eva would do it to add anything, or did I get it right?
Yeah, I, I think you're spot on. I think that, that the idea was to, was to set a high number, knowing that there's also a $20,000 and $20,500 free cash appropriation still set aside for this project. So if the council approves this appropriation, bringing the total amount of, to $95,500 for this RFP for a, a design and a structural design and assessment of the, of the clock and the surrounding elements needed to support it. And this is a city planning project, so I can also defer it to Allison, the planning director, who wants to speak to it.
Just for a moment, I'd like to just say that this is the, you described the place well. It's across from Big East for anyone who may not, may not recognize the street names, et cetera, as an orientation point. It is the iconic center of our city and really is classic New England, in my opinion, and serves us kind of as a grounding point. And it is our clock. Allison, please.
Hi, everyone. Allison Manuel, planning director. I don't really have much to add, other than to touch on the free cash appropriation. We did use a portion of that to do the black shrouding that is currently on the clock, which was a safety measure because of the pieces that were falling off. The plan is to use up that free cash appropriation first and then cover the difference with the CPA funds. The hope is that the, the total amount that we're appropriating here is, is more than is needed. We just don't want to run into the same problem again, where nobody even responds to our request for proposals because our number's just too low. And if that's the case, if it is, if it does come in under, we'll return the CPA money.
So if I understand this correctly, our options are to leave the clock in place with some sort of shrouding, fix it, make it run an operational. They've come up with a plan to make it run an oper, an operational. Remove it, which kind of. a plan to make it run an operational, remove it, which kind of, I'm not sure that's an option, but it is a consideration.
It is a contributing structure to the Main Street Historic District, so we would run into some trouble, I think, trying to remove it entirely. The shrouding is definitely just a temporary measure. It's not going to, it's not, it's not going to hold everything back if everything starts to fail. And there are internal parts as well and the study will look at that. It's not just about the facade and the exterior. There's clockworks inside and a very heavy bell and the structure that supports that will be looked at closely to make sure that it can continue to support the bell. And if there's any, you know, shoring up that needs to be done, that will be put into the designs.
That's great. Thank you for the explanation. Councillor Riley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I remember when we initially had this conversation and one of the concerns that I had back then, which I just would like to reiterate again, is, so I know this is a very peculiar situation where there is city property within a church and that the line between the separation of church and state and in terms of how things are funded is also peculiar in this situation. So, you know, this is with, you know, no slight to those from within the church. They've been incredible community partners to the city of East Hampton. I would just like to reiterate my caution that when this project begins, that we don't spend any money repairing things for the church that is the church's property. So, you know, there's clearly a line between where our property ends and theirs begins. And that if, while doing this work, there's an understanding that something else must be done to the church itself, that we're very clear on who pays for what. I see councillor Peak has his hand up, so maybe he has an answer for me.
Excellent point. Peculiar, that is a very peculiar word, but it's a very good choice. Councillor Peak.
Yeah, what I will say about this, and this is kind of news to me, to be honest, even though we've discussed this before, I must have gone over my head last time, is that whether or not you believe that this should be the case, CPA funds can be used to fund repairs of churches provided those churches are in fact designated as historical structures. So, I mean, I generally agree that in principle, our focus should be fixing our stuff because we have a responsibility to do that and it's not, shouldn't be anyone else's responsibility to fix our stuff. But just for the record, like in Hadley recently, they have a historic church that they use some CPA funds to make, I think, steeple and clock repairs there, and that is not city property. It's just, it is a designated historical structure and part of a historical district, so the funds would be allowed to do that. So whether or not, I think there's a broader question about, you know, preferences and whatever, but like just in terms of the legality of it, like CPA funds are permissible for that use.
Perfect. Thank you for explaining. I don't know how I never learned that after all these years.
I feel like I just learned it like three weeks ago, so you know.
That's great. Thank you for providing that insight. I appreciate it.
Glad we're all learning things today. Councillor Jancik.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I think it's an interesting point that councillor Riley brings up only because I had the chance to hear a little bit about this project from our DPW director recently. And he probably can speak to us a lot better than I can, but it was my understanding from that conversation that the access to the clock is quite dangerous in and of itself. And so I do think that what councillor Riley brings up is an interesting point for us to consider, perhaps even just a further conversation in the future with the church because if the clock is our property, but we are not able to access it safely to allow a third-party vendor or crafts person to be able to go and access that piece of our property. And if the church doesn't have funding to mitigate that danger, I do think that puts us in a position where we might have to, in the future, consider, do we have to then appropriate additional funding in order to use this appropriation to fix the clock? So again, I don't know what the answers are, but I think it is a consideration for us to keep in mind.
Councillor Peak.
Yeah, I think that's a really great point, but I do think that just for, just contextualizing this, these funds would be used to do this design. So I think when those questions come up about a lot of these things, like, you know, we're going to be able to have those discussions being fully informed about a lot of these details and things where I think in some places we have a pretty good idea, but maybe not a perfect idea. And so my hope is that this project would actually help to contextualize it and help us to have those conversations with all the stakeholders involved.
Be ready. Yep. From the public here, do we have any comments?
Good evening. Dan Risk, 26 Line Street. I'm also the vice chair of the, the guys? Vice Chair of the CPA Committee. I want to thank councillor Peak for addressing the concerns about church and state. This is happening all over the state. When you designate locally a historic architecture like the church, you can use CPA funds for it. You can use CPA funds to fix a steeple like they did in Hadley and they did it in West Springfield. There's no restriction. It doesn't run a file of the anti-aid amendment. However, that doesn't mean you won't get complaints because I didn't know myself that that was required until recently because I always thought we were going to run a file of that if we just, luckily, we own the clock so we could get it fixed, but now there's not a problem with that. And to answer your questions, we have a member of the church board, Greg Rowland, here who can talk about, I've never been up there. I don't think my legs would let me get up there, but he will answer your questions. I just have a statement to read. I've been a champion of the Community Preservation Act for as long as it has been available to the city. It allows our city to fund projects that otherwise could never be funded with the tight budgets we have. The three tenants of the CPA restrict funding to affordable housing, open space and recreation, and historic preservation. Tonight, the council is considering, and you have approved, a project for all three. I think that's remarkable. The clock has been on my radar for years. After its deterioration was presented to me, we tried to fund the design a few years ago, as councillor Peak said, but found that the funding was insufficient. Although the Congregational Church is on the local historic register and is eligible for funding, the unique situation of the clock being owned by the city is important as a liability for falling debris is strictly the city's. Debris recently fell, prompting the city to have the clock's outer faces covered to prevent that from happening. The clock looks like it's covered by a funeral shroud right now. Before we can fund the clock and the structural repairs that may be necessary, the law requires an architect to make recommendations for its replacement, a new bell ringer, and any structural repairs to ensure a 50-year life for our clock. The history of our small city must be preserved. We have seen how history can easily be destroyed in the District of Columbia. The church clock is quintessential iconic New England. Please preserve it. I also want to thank Allison Monroe and the Planning Department for sponsoring this as it needs the city department to do so. Thank you.
Next.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Greg Rowland. I am at 23 Summer Street in East Hampton. I've been on the CPA Committee a long time. I'm the longest standing member on the CPA Committee here in the city. I've been a member of the CPA Committee longer than I've been a member of East Hampton Congregational Church, which I also am a member of. And I sit on the Board of Trustees of the Congregational Church. I live, for those of you who don't know where Summer Street is, behind East Hampton Savings Bank and in that little neighborhood behind Biggie's. So I walk to church with my, or I have in recent years with my three teenage daughters and my wife. And I just want to speak to, this is obviously a very unique property for the city. It's a unique situation for the church. And I'm going to speak a little bit to the history, because I'm also a history person. The origin of East Hampton as a city is intertwined with the congregational churches of New England. And it's just part of New England history and it's partly why these congregational churches are iconic and ubiquitous around small New England towns. East Hampton was created by a splinter group of the Northampton Congregational Church that was over sort of near the Oxbow and East Street area. And they basically petitioned to create their own congregation, which became the city of East Hampton. And so our founding date of 1785 is when the charter for the new East Hampton Congregational Church was approved in Northampton. It sort of became legally separated at a time when church and state were kind of much more intertwined here in New England. So I just want to kind of, I'm not a believer in bringing church and state any closer together than they currently are, but that's a little bit of the reality of New England history. I think when it comes to CPA funds in general, the committee at large, but also the city, needs to look at public benefit. So independent of whether it is a religious structure or a privately owned tattoo parlor or, we've had a number of different things that have come forward over the years. And the lens that the CPA Committee looks at is the public benefit. So funding projects is really much, you know, through that lens. And I just, I think the committee has been very clear on that. And looking at the anti-aid amendment is specifically not for churches necessarily, but also just for non-public or municipal-owned properties. So a nonprofit that comes forward and wants public dollars is also subject to the anti-aid amendment in the same way that religious institutions or other institutions are. So obviously, this church, as I'm going to put my church hat on a little bit, representing congregational church members who have received complaints or requests from the public, when are you going to fix your clock? It has been a challenge in recent years to navigate that because we don't own the clock. So we, as the church community, would have put in a application to the CPA Committee for this historic clock long ago and tried to have a repair, but we don't own the clock, so the church can't actually do that. So we're really excited at this moment. The Planning Department has made this application. We think it's timely. It is the first step because it is an architectural assessment of the clock and the workings of the clock. And we're eager, just obviously there was some deterioration and we're looking to have that remedied, both on the city side, but also on the church side. As far as access and the integrity of the steeple, it is an old structure. It is an inconvenient structure to access. It has never been meant to be convenient. It is a church steeple. That doesn't mean it's unsafe, but there is like a trap door. It is a steep winding staircase to get to the top. I've been there multiple times. Part of this project, long-term, the envisioning of it, is that people will not need to access it frequently. There is an enormous bell at the top. There is no, there is no plan for the bell to swing. The bell has been static for years and the plan is to have a remote hammer to be able to chime the bell and bring the tone of the bell back to the city. But it should be able to be operated from like a remote location without having to go up and down. So I think, you know, we'll see what the architectural assessment is on this, but I feel very safe going up and down. It's just extremely inconvenient and cramped. And I'm happy to take any questions from councillors.
Thank you. Anyone else here online? Please raise your hand. If you have any comments, the public is invited online to have comments or questions. Seeing none. I will say, I was really appreciative of the elucidation of the arguments of church and state and CPA and the education that gets provided. So I thank you all for your comments. As we go through the various comments, what occurred to me is, yes, we want to certainly preserve the exterior of the structure of the clock, the internals of the clock itself because it's owned by the city. And it's a good question that councillor Jancik raised about what happens if something else, councillor Riley spoke to it, you spoke to it, what else do we do if something else is found? What happens? This is good that we're going to study the matter, we're going to find out. And I would going to easily say that, well, if it has to do with the outside of the structure, it's easy to say this is the outside and it is an historic building. Stairway, stairway with access to ours. And I appreciate Mr. Rowland's comments about the integrity of the stairs to help us understand that from his perspective. So, thank you. Any other questions or comments or thoughts on the subject from councillors? Councillor Peak. Oops, I did not see councillor Smith.
That's okay.
Just yell out if I miss you.
Yeah, I raised my hand. I was just wondering, why are we still owning the clock versus giving the clock to the church?
Excellent question. I see several people.
Yeah, I don't want to speak out of the house of the church, but I don't know that they want it, for one thing. The city signed a memorandum of understanding a few years ago that spells out what exactly we own and it was agreed to by both parties.
So we have an historic record establishes the current understanding of ownership. I will recognize.
When we first discussed this with former Mayor La Chapelle, she actually offered to sell the clock for a dollar in the thought of trying to avoid the architect and all of this if they own the clock. But our purchaser noted quite clearly that if we're using CPA tax funds, it doesn't matter who owns it. I mean, if the clock was owned by the church, we still had to have that architect study done. So it doesn't need to be changed in changed hands maybe in the future, but it doesn't solve the problem of having to have an architect. Because we were trying to avoid that, that $75 or whatever thousand. We were trying to avoid it, but that cost is going to have to be incurred no matter who owns the clock.
Thank you. Questions? Further thoughts? Mr. Rowland? I will recognize you.
Thank you.
It's a little uncommon to go back to the audience. Please do.
Yeah, I am unaware of the dollar offer to the church. What I will say, again, a little bit of history, through the middle of the 20th century and into, I believe, the 1970s, there was on payroll for the city of East Hampton a clockkeeper. So it was a paid city position with somebody who accessed the clock and regularly kept it in condition, you know, in working condition on behalf of the city. So it is not a relic of the 18th or 19th centuries. It's well into the 20th century that the city had an active person paid, you know, in part to take care of their clock. I think that was codified in the memorandum of agreement based on that history. And I guess it potentially could be undone at some future time, but that's just not where we are. So I just wanted to kind of clarify again a little bit of the history of that relationship. Also, I have a key to the church and in my personal invitation to allow any council member to take a look. So if you wanted to get a tour, we have been good partners with the city for a very long time, but, you know, since I happen to be the sole representative of the church here tonight, I can let you in or anybody at the church would be happy to host you for access. I don't think access should be, it's more of a logistical issue than any other for access. Thank you.
Thank you for the invitation. Councillor Peak.
Go. All right, I'll make the following request in the form of a motion. A request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested $75,020. Amount requested seventy-five thousand dollars to be appropriated from fund balance reserved for historical resources, seventy-five thousand dollars to be appropriated to town clock design, seventy-five thousand dollars. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose. Uh, the funding would be used to complete an assessment and restoration design of the town clock.
We have a motion in a second regarding the town clock. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Eyes have it. Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Peak.
I'm also.
Okay. Councillor Denham.
Thank you, Mr. President. So uh before us, um, we have a proposal prohibiting the application of biosolids on municipal property. Um, this has been an ongoing conversation for over a year where we had an additional item, this is one we're on our um agenda regarding a moratorium on sewage sludge. Um, and what we found through discussions, we worked very closely with our um agricultural uh commission um and really sought their insights um and thoughts and opinions uh regarding um biosolids on um property in part um related to protection of the aquifer, um, as well as recognizing that the impact of PFAS on soil uh et cetera, and part of uh why we were talking about sewage sludge, because there is an incident uh in the community where uh sewage sludge uh was applied uh to uh property uh which led to um complaints from residents because of the intense odor that was associated uh with that. Um, so we, through our discussions with the aquifer protection, um, or I'm sorry, the agricultural commission, they were really of two minds and very split um about um not allowing certain um materials to be applied to soil, and in part that has to do with East Hampton's uh right to farm. Um, and so we were um gave them a lot of space to be able to have some internal dialogue around what that would look like. Um, and so at a recent meeting, we removed the um the moratorium on sewage sludge uh without prejudice, so that is something that could be brought up again. At the same time, uh, there are two states, um Maine and Connecticut uh that are looking at um laws uh prohibiting uh PFAS um that could end up in in soils. Um, and the state of Massachusetts, the Commonwealth, right now is actually looking at something similar. And so we were not inclined to write something that may be in conflict or not as um uh thorough uh in terms of looking at that. So President uh Kuzinski, uh, who was the original um um proposer uh to this particular uh item, uh, worked with the um city solicitor um to create uh this proposal prohibiting the application of biosolids on municipal property. So instead of being a kind of citywide thing, we narrowed the scope of it to be just on municipal property. Um, and the agricultural commission felt that that was a fair compromise uh in part uh because it becomes a um opportunity for the city uh to um uh kind of take the first step, I guess, so to speak, in addressing this particular issue. And then hopefully other individuals, farmers, uh, people who own property, you know, like houses and and whatnot would also follow suit to be able to adopt that. So this is really just a first step. Um, the item is, has not gone away because we um we uh looked at um without prejudice, the the other kind of item that we had on the agenda. Uh, and so this, what you have in front of you is really just um a a a statement of uh of the city not um not having any property that is maintained by the city to have any biosolids that are applied to it. And hopefully other people will follow suit. So really it's just uh um being a good steward of our property um um and being a good mentor to the rest of the city, so as a first step. And I'm happy to answer any questions, but I think that was really the gist of a year-long conversation.
Councillor Peak.
Um, I am, I think, I I I'm not as worried about PFAS as anybody else. Um, I'm just curious, are there, are there current applications of biosolids on municipal property?
To my understanding, there are not.
Okay.
Um, but I think that this is saying, even moving forward, that this is something that is not going to happen.
Thank you.
And I just want to be clear.
Councillor.
Is that, so what we have before us is a new ordinance? Or is it a revision to an existing one with the wording that you have here? Is this brand new?
No.
It is a new.
And that's what we're voting on tonight is this wording?
Yes. Go ahead.
I I I will say that I think that I have heard from one person within the community that this is something that could be stronger and uh, you know, to your question of, are we using, well, we're not using it on municipal property, right? But again, uh, could this be stronger? Could we do more yet? Sure, yes. Uh, I think that we're in in large part waiting to see what the Commonwealth decides. Um, but also I think, again, no disrespect to anybody, I think this is our first step, uh, given that we have um different stakeholders within the community who look at soil, use of soil, soil contamination, very differently, right? And so I think that we're trying to be uh good partners to some of our um um city uh um committees, commissions, uh, to be able to to address an issue that I'm sure moving forward will be um a a challenging conversation. And I'm, this was uh uh to to President Kuzinski, this was was your item. So if there's, you know, if there's things that you would like to say, I welcome you to speak.
The state of Maine and and the state of Connecticut have enacted laws. And because of problems that they had with their farmlands in particular. And my biggest concern is that we protect the food supply. The water supply may be affected if the contaminants leak through to our aquifer, which pervades much of the city uh in uh either a zone one or a zone two water supply areas. The concern I have is that that message just isn't getting out for the most part. Farmers are unaware of the plight of other farmers in other states and in our state. As word spreads, I think we can help to educate everyone to take action on this matter. To restrain themselves voluntarily from putting forever chemicals on the farmland and into our water supply is hope that everyone takes attention and pays attention to this. And that's what we're trying to do, is to send that message forth. I think this this measure, although limited, does protect, in fact, some farmland in the city. The city owns some farmlands that are leased out and used. Should someday they turn into farmlands for vegetable production, for other farm products, for farm animals to eat, uh, aside from horses, let's say, but animals that people would eat, that would enter the food supply. That becomes our biggest concern. Uh, our water supply is important and we don't want any immediate runoff or runoff that would be, or or areas that would be infiltrated into the uh aquifer. So we're taking that first step. At that time, if there's no further comments from councillors, I would open this up to the public. Councillor Riley, I saw you before I did.
Um, thank you, Mr. President. So um, you know, a a question that I have about this specifically is, and I and I don't know that there's an answer for it right now, and it's not going to change my vote, I'm going to, I'm going to support this. Um, but I know, just paying attention to regional policy debates, um, that there are, there are a lot of concerns in Connecticut about what Vermont, New Hampshire and Massachusetts do to the Connecticut River upstream. Because the things that we do impact the residents of Connecticut against their own will. And I I would just say, I I I think going forward, if we could, you know, you all who have been re-elected and for the new councillors coming in, to be mindful and and think about, is there any potential where people could be held liable across state boundaries for violating, say, Connecticut law by having these chemicals ending up in the water and coming downstream? I again, I don't know what the answer to that is, but I know that this is a a very um heavy debate that's happening in Connecticut right now about what communities in Massachusetts are doing with our water supplies. Um, so to the extent that we take these next steps after this, um, that that we pay close attention to what could potentially happen if it means that the state of Massachusetts violates Connecticut state law. Um, and again, that that may be that, you know, the attorney general's office is going to take care of that. I don't know, but um just to keep it on everybody's radar as you go forward in the future.
Thank you. Anyone from the public in the audience here to speak on this matter? Seeing none, how about the public online? Please raise your hand if you have any comments or thoughts. Seeing none. Entertained. Motion itself.
Great, thank you, Mr. President. And again, this is just in full transparency of first step, right? Um, so in the form of a motion, uh, to adopt chapter eight, article one, sections eight, streets, sidewalks and public grounds. I'm not going to read the whole ordinance, right, so.
I think it probably should be.
I'm going to read this unless councillor Peak would like to read it.
I love reading, but I think I'd love you to have the delight of.
I'd be happy to read it.
Uh, chapter eight, article one, section eight, streets, sidewalks and public grounds. The application or spread of biosolids on real property owned, leased or maintained by the city of East Hampton is prohibited. A used in this ordinance, the term biosolids shall include, but is not limited to a treated and untreated sewage floods generated by municipal, commercial or industrial wastewater treatment plant, septicage or other source collectively sludge. B compost materials which include sludge or any product derived from, on containing sludge. Yeah.
Couple, we noted a couple of times.
Or C, any other product or material that is utilized or intended for use as a fertilizer, soil amendment, topsoil replacement or mulch, or for other similar agricultural purposes, purpose that is derived from or contains sludge.
Thank you. We didn't say in a second?
Second.
Uh, motion in a second, I'll make a motion to adjust the language, A, to as in the first sentence. And in D, uh, the first on becomes or.
Second.
Set motion in a second to adjust the language, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes the amendment. Now, the most main motion, any further discussion on the main motion? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, eyes have it. Motion passes. Thank you. Motion in a second, close the public hearing, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. These hearings are now closed. I would like to just give a quick communication before we proceed too far. Everyone who's listening and live tonight, tonight is a very serious storm that's coming, is dangerous. The winds could be very high tonight. I've heard reports as high as seventy miles an hour. I don't know where it's coming from, but huge storm. I know we received effort source notifications, so those who are out there, please take note for your light items, anything in your yards, be careful. Tie them down, get them inside. That being said, uh, also wanted to report, if I may, about uh the election and swearing in. Since we heard from councillor Coniff, who will be leaving us as of tonight. Uh, we will be having uh her replacement. Uh, and that is the person who has won the at-large race, who is not currently higher, the highest votes in the at-large race, who is not currently sitting on the council. That person is councillor-elect Jonathan Schmidt. Uh, and we would invite you to be sworn in uh to November nineteenth, at the beginning of our meeting. So, thank you so much and congratulations. Welcome aboard to councillor uh Schmidt. Uh, the other item is, we have a new mayor coming up. A mayor-elect Derby, uh, who ran a very important race, did very well, won by the highest number of votes on the first round and in the next round. Uh, so congratulations to our new mayor. With that, the council business that we have before us will be the replacement of the precinct four person. I would at this time ask that the council consider scheduling a special meeting for November nineteenth, just before our regular meeting, let's say at five thirty, where we could discuss the vote on the replacement. The process is that the council appoints for the remainder of the term. According to charter, the council replaces for the remainder.
It's not the person elected, it's the person elected.
It's not the person elected, they they get to sign in, that's the way the charter reads, so.
Maybe we could fix that.
Well, maybe we could fix it. And my recommendation at that time, at this time, would be that we uh appoint uh the newly elected precinct four councillor, Amanda Newton, to the position. That's my recommendation, but that's entirely a decision up to the council. Uh, so I would schedule, ask for scheduling a special meeting at five thirty on November nineteenth.
So just a point of clarification, so just earlier than we would normally.
Just earlier than we normally would meet, which would meet to requirements of having a special, calling a special meeting.
Understood. Thank you.
Uh, councillor Denham.
We would also have to.
That's an interesting point, we do not. In this case.
Are you guys reading each other's minds? What what was councillor Denham going to say? Well, because.
We're reading each other's minds.
Because.
She didn't say it.
Councillor Jadzik replaced councillor Gomez. And so technically, after the election now, she also has to be sworn in.
I believe she was appointed for the remainder of the term. She believes she's not. If you'd like to be sworn in, I think we could accommodate that.
Yes, sir.
Councillor Jadzik.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, this former city clerk, Barbara Lumma bard.
Yes.
Told me in no uncertain terms that if I lost my election, that I would lose the seat for the remainder of the year. So it is my understanding that I have to be sworn in officially on the nineteenth to replace myself for the rest of this year.
Now, 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 the head is just really swimming in all of this. You're going to replace yourself. Well, tell me how to duplicate myself and I'd be in two places at once.
I don't know how you believe that.
Yeah, that would be great. Uh, councillor Denham.
Yeah, the the circumstance is the same, right? We had a vacancy and councillor Coniff replaced the former councillor. And this is, this, it's the same exact thing, so.
It, it is a bit different. The vacancy occurred for Counselor Jadzick's position early in the year, when, when, when Counselor Gomez resigned. That was an earlier situation. The vacancy which is to occur by the nineteenth is just occurring. And it may have to do.
No, it's the same year, too.
Yours, yours was as a, as a, as an at-large counsel.
Right.
Yes. I'll reconsulpe with the attorney. I'd be happy to schedule both.
I mean, just as Jonathan is replacing me.
And, and that is for the position of an at-large counselor from before, when the election occurred months ago, many months ago. Your election occurred many months ago. I understood that there was a distinction. In any case, we hope to see your face here on the nineteenth. And, and I would, for, uh, re-amend my motion to say, to replace councilors for priest, to replace precinct councilors as, 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 as required.
Yes, and I, I believe that for my position, unlike Counselor Coniff's position, I don't need to be approved to replace myself. I just need to be officially sworn in on the nineteenth.
Right, and that may be the reason we're not, yeah. But in any case, we're gonna say to replace councilors. If that's okay with everybody? Second to that motion?
Second.
Second. Motion in a second for the special meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We will have a special meeting on five, at five thirty on the nineteenth. All right. I see someone on the, on my seat over there.
May I ask a question?
No, no more questions. Please do.
No, I just wanted to, this is just for me. So Felicia will be reappointed until January when she's sworn in.
Mm-hmm.
And in a similar, oh God, I don't wanna screw it up and I don't want any more questions, so I take my question away. Let's move on, because I think I'm gonna go down and.
Don't, don't, you don't.
That, we probably don't need to go down. Nevermind.
It's probably all good since she's replacing herself.
Tom has a question.
Can I attempt this? Or we can move on. I don't really care either way, to be honest. Basically, my understanding is that Jonathan and Felicia are subject to the same situation, and then the precinct four is a separate thing, and that's all I gotta say about it. Like, both of them.
Would be the same. Okay, good.
Where, both of them were coming into.
You'll either be sworn in or elected and sworn in.
Great. Yeah, I think we'll figure it all out.
Point everybody in swearing in.
Very good.
No.
No more. Mayor, communication.
Please.
We get to.
Keyword, communication.
Communication. Try to make it, um, you know, I'm a little, a little tired. It's been a long two days. Um, so I'll do my best, but I think that I might need to replace myself, too. So we might need to factor that into the whole situation, just for fun. Um.
No comment.
May I ask, were you thinking of, of coming to this meeting to be sworn in?
Well, I think it could probably be done during the regular meeting.
I'm sorry?
I, I, my swearing in, which I think would probably happen at that meeting as well, since it's after the ten-day period, um, would happen to probably during the regular meeting. I mean, if, I'll, I'll defer to the president to make that decision.
Th- this is all, uh, a, a very interesting situation that we're in. Typically, this doesn't happen, folks, uh, but in this case.
Times.
We, we get through it. I would, I have invited the mayor to be sworn in if he so chose, goes. He is, it is his choice, the new mayor, to be sworn in at any time after being certified. So at any time after being certified, you may be sworn in.
Okay.
But seeing that you're replacing yourself, you duplicated yourself, too, so, okay, good.
Um, and so I just wanna start, um, my mayor communication. I actually do have something that is quite important. Um, but before I start that, I do wanna acknowledge everybody that worked so hard over the last few months, um, to campaign and to run for the city that they care about, and I think it's an amazing testament to our community, um, how amazing, uh, and vibrant the election was, and the, the record turnout that we got was really great. And, you know, I wanna give a special kind of acknowledgement to, um, the people that were campaigning for mayor, because that is especially difficult, um, task to undertake, and it puts a lot of strain on you personally and on your families. And, um, and I think it's worth acknowledging that, you know, everybody worked really hard, and for the most part, it was a very cordial and, and pleasant, um, race to, to run in. So, and I just wanna extend, um, to the other candidates that, you know, as we move into a new chapter, I, I wanna be as open to their ideas and to their input as, as I possibly can be. Um, and because I think that people that care and love about the city should, should be able to have a voice in the mayor's office, and, and I wanna make sure that that's known. Um, and so I just wanted to put my special acknowledgement out to them. Um, so now getting into the next piece, which I think is another piece I think is important, is, uh, Counselor Coniff. Um, I, I, I may or may not have encouraged you to be sitting in this seat right now. Um, and, and I think that that, for me, was not a stretch, because having served with you, I realized, again, someone who really cares about their community, is willing to put in the work, um, is willing to do the due diligence, and, you know, I think that's a special quality that, you know, really serves city councilors. Um, and I, I knew that you had that. And so that's one of the reasons why I wanted to make sure that I reached out to you, to encourage you, to see if you would fill this spot. And, and I don't know if you remember, but, um, I also felt that you had skills that were, were so, um, honed, that I needed to make sure that you were on specific committees and, and had to restructure, you know, and that's not always an easy thing. But it was, you know, in, in an effort to make sure that we had balance within the committees and we were able to put the expertise which you had in the right place. So, as I say goodbye to you as a city councilor for a second time, I think it's important to notice, even if, you know, even if you like to make fun of me sometimes, I still want, I'm, I'm hoping that you always know that I, I deeply respect the, um, commitment and the effort that you've, you've given to our city. So, um, you know, you will be missed. Maybe you're, you're joking with me. It, it will be, I'm sure you'll do it anyways, so whatever, I won't even say it. Um, but I, I just wanna say thank you, um, for stepping up, because it was, it was really, um, needed and, and I appreciate it. So, um, now, onto my report, because I, I just wanna, this has been a crazy few weeks. Um, and one of the things that was really, uh, disheartening and, and scary, uh, for me as an interim mayor, was to see what was going on with, um, the government shutdown, but more specifically SNAP benefits. Um, and so when that started to happen, I really felt like I owed, uh, a responsibility to our community to try to see if there was a way that we could help as a city. And I have basically been on a two-week quest, um, to the point where, you know, for many weeks, what woke me up in the middle of the night was what was going on with a campaign, and that quickly faded away to waking up in the middle of the night worrying about whether we were gonna have people in our community that were not gonna have enough food. Um, so I ended up meeting with Josh Garcia from Holyoke, and we had a really interesting, um, meeting. You know, he has a significant, uh, population of people on SNAP benefits, and interestingly enough, people that are federal workers that had just gone without their first paycheck, um, which adds to this, and not to mention the economic impact that this is having on our grocery stores, um, and other businesses that reliance, you know, people using their SNAP benefits. So, I had this great conversation with him. One of the things he mentioned was ARPA funds. You know, I, I don't know if you're familiar, but Northampton, um, with their ARPA funds, was able to fund the Northampton Survival Center. Um, and, and so that quickly kind of came into my orbit, um, looking at ways that we as a city could find, uh, a pathway to, to materially support organizations in East Hampton that were providing direct food to people that needed it. Um, and this was not an easy process, because I guess we've talked a lot about the anti-aid amendment tonight. Uh, that became a, a stumbling point pretty quickly. But more so, where do we get money? Um, because our, our, our PR funds are obligated, and, um, so we had to get a little creative. I'll say, this is great. This is one of the reasons why East Hampton is amazing, and our staff is amazing, because our staff got creative. And we started to look at, um, funds, uh, specifically ARPA funds, and realized that, yes, all of our ARPA funds are obligated, so we can't really do much with ARPA funds. However, those ARPA funds have not been spent, not all of them, and they're in a bank account. So when we checked to see what bank account they were in, we realized it was a bank account that was gaining four percent interest. Um, so we were making a significant amount of interest off of these funds that have been obligated but not spent. Um, and so we started on a path to figuring out how we could potentially use these funds. And I would say that, um, that path has been, um, completed, and in the next couple of days, I'm going to be reaching out to the East Hampton Community Center. And I'll, I'll explain why the East Hampton Community Center in a second, but, um, to do a, a contract with the city of East Hampton and the East Hampton Community Center to provide food assistance to, um, people that go to the East Hampton Community Center. Um, there is a decent amount of money in this bank account. I don't feel that at this moment it's prudent to use it all. Um, so what I proposed is that we will take, um, a, a small piece of this, which would be two thousand dollars, um, to do a thirty-day contract with the East Hampton Community Center to allow them to give direct food assistance. Um, and each, each dollar that we give to the East Hampton Community Center, they can provide two meals. So that could potentially be four thousand meals, um, over a thirty-day period, which I think with some of the reinstatement of SNAP benefits, benefits, not the full reinstatement, but some of the reinstatement, and some of the aid that the state has released, could really kind of fill the gap, um, and, and really be helpful. Um, so this is something that was really exciting. We kind of were able to nail this down today, so even after a long night, I was in City Hall this morning trying to figure this out and, and work on the contract language, and, um, I'm really hoping to see this, uh, come to fruition, um, early next week. So, uh, that, that's really the, the main update I, I wanted to say. Besides the fact that I said I'd go back, why, I was talking about the East Hampton Community Center, one of the pieces of this is, though, you have to use these funds for things that would be, um, allowed under ARPA guidelines, since it's interest from an ARPA fund, and, and providing food assistance is one of those things. The other thing that has to happen is it has to be open to everybody. You can't put restrictions on it, because one of the things that I really wanted to in the beginning, I was thinking about doing micro grants, um, to the East Hampton Farmers Market, for example. They have a SNAP match benefit. It's a ten-dollar benefit, uh, and I was hoping to be able to, you know, give a, a small micro grant to them to be able to fund that benefit. Um, but restricted to people that are just on SNAP, so it wouldn't fall under the guidelines of this. And the other one is the Pioneer Valley Power Packs, which is an amazing program based in East Hampton that gives, um, you know, bagged lunches to kids that are, are school-aged, that are, don't, are, are facing food insecurity that, since they're not in school on the weekends, they, they need food. Um, and I would love, so I'm not done trying to figure out how to fund those other two things, because I think they're really important, but I think this is a good step towards, you know, doing our part as a city to really help, um, address the, the needs of our community members and food insecurity with the faces, the crisis that we're facing right now. Um, and so, you know, I would be, I don't wanna take up any more time. I just wanted to make you aware of what we've been working on, how we're kind of coming to that. Um, and, you know, I, I think, I'm hoping that it's an exciting idea, and, and, and there is enough money that I think that we're gonna kind of keep it to potentially say, if this happens again, we're gonna have a, a way to help mitigate some of the impact, um, and have a plan. So, um, just wanted to put that out there. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer, and then I'll let you get on with it.
Counsel Riley?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, yeah, you know, I, I just wanted to say, you know, thank you to you, um, Mayor Derby, and, um, to the, um, political parties, um, within East Hampton who came together to do a food drive, um, Nathan Markey's truck was full when I left at one P M. Um, so, you know, as somebody who grew up, um, food insecure and relied on WIC benefits, um, and, well, SNAP benefits, but back then, you know, food stamps, um, the amount of fear that comes from not knowing if you're going to be able to eat, or being a parent that doesn't know if you're gonna be able to feed your kids, is a psychological hell that you can't explain to somebody unless you've experienced it yourself. Um, and, and I just wanted to say how thankful I am for everyone who's come together to do, um, this work, particularly right in the middle of an election. Um, I know that so many people put their everything into their campaigns, but to be able to do all of that plus this at the same time, it, it, it's, it makes me feel really good to know that this is a character trait that we have in East Hampton. Um, so, you know, I, I have, uh, regularly donated my city council stipends, um, to various causes in East Hampton. Um, so I, I would just like to say to you, um, Mayor Derby, that I'll also donate my, um, four hundred and thirty-two dollars for November, um, to the community center, um, to, to maximize that two thousand dollars. Um, and if any of you on the council can do the same thing, I'm not saying that you should, but if you can, I, I would love to see us also donate our stipends, um, towards this cause to, to really emphasize how much we care about members within our community. So, I'm not gonna put anybody on the spot or ask, but if that is something that you would like to join me in, um, I will do so, um, with the community center. So, thank you for everything that you did on this front, and please relay my thanks to everybody, um, within City Hall who helped, um, sort this out. I know digging through compliance for ARPA funds is, is not an easy task, so, um, thank you to everybody who did that.
Appreciate it.
I'd also like to express my congratulations to you for working hard on that serious issue. I know confluence of the whole world is coming together, and an election at the same time is not easy, but you did a remarkable job in pulling all that together, so you're to be congratulated for that. Also, I can't help but to call out our federal partners. In this situation, it is my understanding that this is the first time ever SNAP benefits were allowed to lapse during the shutdown of our government. I find it unconscionable personally that that's the case. We should not be in that situation. Those who need the benefits should be getting the benefits regardless, and political differences aside, we need to come together, folks. We need to come together. And this council's doing the very best to make it happen, and I thank you, Mayor, for doing it. You're very impressive.
Sure.
On a less serious note, Counsel Jadzick, you will be sworn in on the nineteenth. I checked with the attorney's memo. That will be sworn in. You're not on the agenda for the special meeting in any, in any regard. In any case, we all knew you were fudging yourself. So, that being said, thank you very much. Uh, Council, uh, Finance. Finance report.
Counsel Pete. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, yeah, we have a few things. Uh, so we met last week. Uh, we're gonna meet next week, um, but it should be a pretty short meeting, because the new business includes one appropriation that's quite small, uh, so I think we should be able to figure it out pretty quickly. Um, we'll deal with that then. Um, we're sending on borrowing. We're still waiting on, um, uh, just the word to go ahead on that. Um, we did have, um, this, uh, the, uh, I just realized I should have had the, the language for this queued up. Uh, we did meet, uh, with Chief Norris, uh, to discuss, um, some upgraded, some updated language, um, uh, when it comes to, and I already isn't, oh, you haven't, thank you. This is a big package. Okay, uh, so some updated language. Uh, so there are two donation accounts, uh, within the city, um, for these purposes.
We have multiple.
Yes, there are more, many, many, many more than two donation accounts. There are two specific donation accounts related to the fire department, the EMS. Uh, so, uh, one of them is, uh, the, uh, it is the, uh, yeah, there's the fire one and there's the ambulance one, uh, right. And so it's, And so it's, I'm a little sleep deprived, but I'm going to make, I'm going to make it through this. Might be a little bit of a rocky. Um, yeah. Uh, so, uh, the, the reports, uh, both, uh, the, the accounts, both of them, uh, when the chief was looking into it, the language, um, was either outdated or hadn't actually ever been formally established. And so he had proposed that we, uh, update the language to sort of more specifically uh, state what, uh, the, the language, uh, what sort of the definition and the scope of these, uh, accounts is. So the language that is, um, uh, so, and, and, and so, uh, the idea is that to, one of them would say, uh, uh, the language we updated to say approval to establish an account in accordance, uh, with MGL blah, 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 uh, for, uh, the purpose of receiving donations designated for use by the East Hampton Fire Department. So just to kind of keep it broad. Um, and then the other one, the EMS was a little bit more specific, uh, of saying for the purpose of receiving donations, uh, to be used for the purchase of medical equipment and supplies, resources needed for public outreach and educational programs, uh, equipment and resources used, uh, for the health and safety of our members as well as paying for professional development opportunities for members of the organization. Um, so those are the proposed, um, uh, updates to the language to sort of clarify it. Uh, Finance voted, uh, three to zero to, uh, approve, uh, this update, uh, and so, uh, at this time, uh, I, I would make a motion to, uh, to update, uh, both these accounts, the language on both of these accounts in accordance with the Fire Chief's recommendations.
I have a motion in a second to update two donation accounts for the Fire Department. According to the Fire Chief's recommendations, are there any questions by the counselors? Staying done. We have a motion in a second. Would you?
Do you want me to read the whole thing?
Read, read the motion.
Okay.
Yeah, I know that. Uh, so, uh, the, uh, the first one, the Fire Department one would read approval to establish an account in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, for the purpose of receiving donations designated to be used, uh, for the East Hampton Fire Department. And then for the ambulance one, it would say approval to establish an account in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, for the purpose of receiving donations, uh, to be used for the purchase of medical equipment and supplies, resources needed for public outreach and educational programs, equipment and resources used for the health and safety of our members as well as paying for professional development opportunities for members of the organization.
All right. No further questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Done. Motion carries.
Okay. Um, second thing we have, um, uh, is, uh, we met, uh, to discuss the assessors FY26 tax classifications and the request for a public hearing. Uh, we were walked through the, uh, uh, the recommendations, which probably shouldn't surprise anybody there to keep doing what we've traditionally been doing. Um, so, uh, not to spoil their presentation, but, uh, they walk us through the reason for their particular structure every year and, uh, the nothing, um, the facts on the ground haven't changed. So that's kind of where we are. Um, I would like to schedule, uh, I would like to make a motion to schedule a public hearing uh, for our November 19th meeting at 6:15, uh, in these chambers to, uh, vote, uh, to, 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 to get that public hearing from the, uh, uh, the Board of Assessors and to, to do that, to, to, to vote on that.
Second.
Motion in a second regarding tax classification hearing on November 19th. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, um, the next up, um, we also received a, um, a request from the city to adopt General Law, Chapter 200A, Section 9A, um, which is an alternative procedure for managing abandoned funds, uh, so unclaimed checks or tailings. Uh, so we thought that the solution here, uh, for handling uh, unclaimed funds made a lot of sense. Uh, we did approve it in, uh, Finance. This is one where I am unclear if, uh, its adoption would require a public hearing or not.
It's the procedure requiring the return of funds or the, the return to the treasury of funds that were sent out as payment to vendors and to individuals. Yeah, to take them, that money back if that were the case.
Right, but it's not.
It would be something financial. I would think we shot, we did a public hearing.
Yeah. I'm not, yeah, it's fundamentally is the adoption of a mass general law, but I just think that just to be on the safe side, maybe we should schedule a public hearing.
We have one already for the advertising minimal. I would, I would go ahead and do that.
Okay, so, uh, I would, uh, make a motion to set a public hearing, uh, for the, uh, tailings uh, item for, uh, November 19th at 6:15 in these chambers.
Second. Motion second. Regarding the, do you have a question about the motion in the second or?
I just want, there's also the adoption of the, whatever it is, 1990, 87.
I was going to get to that next. I think maybe it might make sense to push that down.
Yeah, let's, let's deal with one of the, yeah.
Yeah, I was going to get to that next.
Deal with this one.
Mm-hmm.
Review motion in a second regarding the request to adopt Chapter 200A, Section 9A, as amended by 65188. Any further questions? Any discussion? All those in favor of scheduling the public hearing for the above mentioned matter?
Aye.
Aye. Motion. Opposed? Un. Motion carries.
Okay.
Now the next issue.
Yes.
Which hopefully will address Counselor Denham's point of view.
I hope so. Um, so there's a city council action request, uh, that's there. I, um, given the fact that there are going to be some public hearings and given the fact that from the sounds of it, there's going to be two brand new counselors that day. I'm thinking it might be slightly inhumane to drop them right into that conversation. Um, so I don't know whether we should push that into December or whether we should just push it into January at that point when we can have a, a full new council. But I, I do think that maybe in the, in light of these items, it might not, it might be, I know that at our last meeting, we had discussed scheduling it. Uh, scheduling that hearing for that meeting. And I'm now thinking in this new context that perhaps we should move that um, towards either one of our December or one of our January meetings. So I, I don't have a strong opinion uh, either way about that, but I thought I'd bring it up.
I think, I think it makes sense to consider the bandwidth of new counselors at the first day, especially when they weren't maybe anticipating all of this that we give them time. So I would certainly be amenable to either the first of December or first week in December or in January sometime. Does anybody have it? You're going to say something. You're not even going to be here.
I know, but I, I.
Counselor got it.
You know, I can't help it. Um, so part of the reason we waited was we wanted to have a mayor in place. And the second piece is we still need to have, I think, internal discussions within Finance. And until we know who's going to be on Finance, it could change.
Mm-hmm.
It feels like something that requires a lot more discussion and attention than trying to squeeze it in either before the end of the year. There's a lot of new counselors coming on board and I feel like it's important enough that they have a hand in gearing this to whichever direction it goes in. Not that I get a vote, but I think it should wait until everyone is sworn in.
Well.
The new slate, as it were.
Point, point well taken. Counselor Denham.
I, I was just going to say I would prefer it not be on the first meeting in December because we have the short term rental ordinance that is going to be taking place on that meeting. And I have a, I have a feeling that it might be a lot of people here. So it could, that would just be a very long meeting. So I don't, other than that, I don't, I don't, I'm not attached to when it happens. It's just on that day.
Counselor Pete.
Yeah. And one other thing that I just thought of is that the, those end of year meetings, uh, tend to involve a lot of reappointments that take a long time. I'm fine just not scheduling something at this time, just sort of rescinding the, the scheduling that we had and waiting into, you know, until we get a new finance committee, we can talk this through and, and, and figure out what the game plan is going to be. And also connect with the mayor and work through that. Um, I just, the one thing I would say now, and I will, just to set sort of expectations for where I, my position on this will be, is that I'd really like to take a vote one way or another on this before we get into full swing with the budget process. Because, um, I just think that it, I, I just think it's, it's nice to set rules for things before we start doing them. Um, so, you know, I don't want to wait until March or April to, to vote on this, but if we want to, uh, you know, push it into maybe late, late January or something like that, I'd be amenable, uh, to that. So I think of just hearing that at this time, I would make a motion, uh, to, uh, I don't know what the word, rescind the scheduling, unschedule.
Postpone.
Postpone indefinitely the public hearing for.
I think we could postpone to a later date.
But I don't know if I want to set the date yet.
That date could subsequently be changed. Postponing definitely, I, I, I feel like we're leaving it in great limbo. And if we postpone till.
How about the second meeting in January?
Second meeting in January or the first meeting in February, I think would be appropriate.
Let's do the first meeting in February.
Then we have a certain date and we can deal with it at that time.
Okay, so I would make a motion to move that public hearing to our first meeting in February, whatever Wednesday that is, at 6:15 in these chambers.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to postpone till the first meeting in February. The date was?
February 4th.
February 4th. The meeting on, uh,
The city outskirts.
Chat, adopting Chapter 23, 29 of the Acts of 1987. Any further discussion on that subject? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Done. Motion carries. This concludes. Public Safety, Counselor Terrell.
I'll be brief. We have not had a meeting since our last, um, city council meeting. Um, it's all, we have.
I thought you had.
Yeah.
Uh, Appointment. Counselor Smith.
We also have not met since our last city council meeting and our next appointment will be on November 10th, 2025, where we'll be looking at, um, for new Merrill appointments as well as for the six Merrill appointments that are still on our docket. And we'll be looking at the code of conduct for appointed members of boards, committees and commissions.
Okay.
Um, can I ask a, a?
Counselor Riley.
Um, and I, I don't know if, um, the clerk has this information available now. It, it was my understanding when I looked at the calendar before that there was a meeting that was already scheduled on the 10th, where we would typically meet. So do you, do you know if there's space in the basement? And, okay, so we'll just have, we'll have to check on that. Okay, no worries.
So at a, at a, at a place to be finally determined, check through the website.
Yep.
Counselor Smith or you?
Me.
Counselor Smith. Okay. Uh, great. The public will now be informed. Uh, November 10th. Anything else? Ordinance. Counselor Denham.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, we haven't met since our last meeting. Our next meeting will be November 12th at 6:00 PM in Conference One. At that meeting, we will be discussing the, um, some amendments to the short term rental, um, ordinance that the, um, Fire Department and the Building Inspector have requested, um, and we can discuss in more detail about what that is. And the other thing that we will be addressing is to amend Exhibit A, Classification of Employees, to add position of Public Safety Dispatch Director at that meeting. Um, as I said, that will be November 12th. We will also be scheduling another meeting this month to address the review of a Forable and Fair Housing Partnership zoning ordinance recommendation. Um, I, I look at dates uh, from the housing partnership that I'll be reaching out to committee members so that we can, um, meet to discuss that. Their, their committee, uh, members, uh, represented on, in, for that discussion, um, have a varied minimum and schedule. So I'm trying to work with them to identify that date. Um, other than that, that is everything that our committee has to offer as counsel this evening.
Thank you. Property.
Mr. President, we have not met since our last meeting. We should get a meeting scheduled soon once we've got our new members sworn in.
Thank you. Rules and government relations, uh, no report this evening, no old business. Uh, new business, Merrill appointments.
It's in the form of a motion. I would like to move the four Merrill appointments that I'm about to read to the Appointment Subcommittee. First one is for Rebecca Bell for the 9/11 Committee with a term expiration of 12/31/28. Next is Leslie Shar for the Commission on Disability, 12/31/26. Taylor Carson, I am the man, TNGDI Committee, 12/31/28. And Francis Guy Renaers for the TNGDI Committee with an expiration of 12/31/28.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to send the appointments to the Appointments Committee. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I abstain.
Oh, we do have an extension. Thank you. We have an extension. One exception be noted.
Counselor Denham.
That was Counselor Denham's extension. Thank you, Counselor Denham.
Hey, I'm paying attention.
Ah, good. Uh, motion carries supplemental veterans dental bill for $85. Counselor Pete.
I would make, uh, a motion, uh, to, um, the first reading of this, uh, move it to Finance and schedule a public hearing for, uh, November 19th, 6:15 in these chambers, uh, for, for this item. Um, request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested at $85 to be transferred from account number 001.5440.5772. $85 to be transferred to the same thing. Um, the amount requested will be used for the following purpose. Uh, the appropriation will be used to pay an FY25 dental bill, uh, for a Chapter 115 benefit recipient using FY26, Chapter 115 funds. The expenditure has already been approved for 75% reimbursement by the state.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second regarding the dental bill. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any exceptions? Being done. Motion carries. Counselor Coniff, again, thank you so much for stepping up. We appreciate it. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Counselor Coniff.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Motion in a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.